Well, good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the February 25th Regina Planning Commission meeting. Is there anyone joining us online? Gentlemen, I would like to begin by welcoming our new commission members that are joining us today: Nicole Cal, Leah Morgan, and returning commission member John Aston. At our first meeting in January, January 21st, if I remember, we voted to table the election of the vice-chairperson to today's meeting. It's my understanding, and it's probably a good idea, that since we have some new faces here and we're going to have orientation right after the meeting, that maybe we table it for next meeting. So, does anyone want to make that motion? Mr. Gassier? All right. Anybody opposed? Carry. So, we just saved a bit of time there, and we'll move on to the formal meeting. Everyone had a chance to look at the agenda? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Mr. Sontag? Any opposed? Could I have a motion for approval of the minutes from last meeting, the 21st? Ms. Wilson? Any errors and omissions? Any opposed? Carry. Now, we'll consider item RPC 25-4, zoning bylaw administrative amendments. I will ask Mr. Lamistani to please introduce the report. BJ, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and the member of Planning Commission. My name is BJ Lamistani. I'm a city planner, too, within the city planning bands at the city. The report in front is regarding the administrative amendments to the current Regina zoning bylaw 2019. Administration is recommending amendments, various amendments, to the current zoning bylaw to keep it clear, coherent, and aligned with the community needs. According to the Planning and Development Act 2007, zoning amendments need city council's approval. Administration reports to city council about once per year recommending various amendments identified through the regular uses, public feedback, adapting to official community plan, policies, and community needs. Although these changes are minor, maintaining the bylaw is crucial to ensure it is consistent, defensible, and reasonable. These amendments are necessary to clarify the intent of regulations or simplify the bylaw for the users. Some of these changes aim to reduce regulatory barriers and enhance flexibility to align with the city's strategic priorities. Specific amendments are detailed in Appendix A of the report, and administration seeks the recommendation of approval and is happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
Thank you, Mr. Lamistani. Can I have someone move the recommendation? Mr. Gassier? Would you like to speak on the report? Any questions from the commission members on this report? Go ahead, Mr. Sontag.
Thank you very much, and through you, Mr. Chair. My question is just related to the, I noticed the, I want to ask this the right way, the council, city council rejected the development out by the airport, and the committee approved, the committee recommended it. Do these changes, the recommendation here today, does that in any way acknowledge that council is looking for a slightly different direction from this, from the committee? Or does that, is that specific, turned down specific to that site kind of thing? I guess what I'm trying to ask, if that's, I hope I wasn't too confusing in the question.
Thank you for the question, Mr. Sontag. And so, I would say this report is directly related to providing some clarification within the zoning bylaw, and in no way is suggesting any different direction to or from council based on the report that was heard last week, or last week, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Mr. Aston, go ahead.
Thank you. So, through the chair, I have a couple of questions for administration. So, there's a number of the proposed changes to do with parking, and forgive me, I don't have all of the parking rules memorized for each zone, so maybe could, could the administration just describe to us the most recent changes for parking in residential and commercial zones and the minimum requirements? I'm reading that they're guidelines, and I just can't remember if that's in all zones or just specific ones, and maybe commission members would benefit from that little bit of explanation through the chair.
Through the chair. Mr. Mario's going to take that question.
That's on video now.
Through the chair, about a year ago, city administration recommended removal of all parking requirements from the zoning bylaw, and they were replaced with recommendations. So, they still exist within the zoning bylaw, but they're, they're not enforceable. So, they're, they're really intended to ensure that there's a point of reference, but ultimately the decision to meet them or not is up to the developer. So, they are recommendations rather than requirements in all zones.
All zones, okay. Just to follow up, one of the proposed amendments here refers to parking lot design, and I found it odd that that's being kind of all removed. Is there any concern with those parking lots where fire trucks would need access? We don't have a minimum lot with, for stall widths and widths of aisles. Was that raised as a concern at all through the chair?
Through the chair, thanks for the question. There are still requirements for emergency access, which are found in the NBC, National Building Code. They were never part of the zoning bylaw. The reason why we decided to make this recommendation is because of the fact that there, the actual requirements are no longer, they're no longer required, they're recommendations, and we were running into situations where it just created a lot of awkwardness when we were reviewing applications, and we encountered issues if a certain stall dimension didn't meet requirements, then we'd have to refer the permit back just based on that. But, at the end of the day, that stall wasn't even required, so it didn't make a lot of sense to make the stall dimensions a requirement, but not the actual stall. So, again, those will be recommendations or guidelines rather than requirements. At the end of the day, it'll be up to the designer to make sure the parking lot itself is functional.
Okay. Final question through the chair is specifically amendment number nine. It refers to planned group of dwellings in specifically two DCD zones. Can you maybe refresh my memory especially, but others perhaps, if planned group of dwellings would be more permitted in other zones now as well, or is it just those two specific DCD zones? Through the chair.
Through the chair, there was amendments last year to allow for planned groups of dwellings as a potential permitted use, and that was subject to certain setbacks and height thresholds. So, the intent was to ensure that there's a clear path towards approval rather than going through a discretionary use process if they meet certain setbacks and things like that. So, the intent with these changes that you see here before you is just to employ them in the direct control district areas, which are kind of area-specific, unique zones. So, we're intending to apply the same standards across general zones and these more unique ones.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Adams?
Hi, yes, thank you. This is your, just procedurally, if you'd be so kind, I get the sense these are kind of interim cleanup measures. I was just very interested in your note and the discussion around, do you intend to bring a more comprehensive zoning bylaw review through council in Q4 of 2025? Could you just talk about the kind of logic path of this versus next steps?
Thank you. That's a good question. So, our team has been going through for these ones specifically, and this is clarity, utilization, consistency. So, you'll see in there that we're trying to make like zones, like, like other zones, and making sure that there's some clarity in our decision-making process. A more substantial bylaw amendment will be coming forward later this year. We are looking to provide clarity around some of the housing work that we did last year, making sure that we're keeping our zoning bylaw user-friendly. And, you know, last year, we made some changes, and it, it now is sort of trying to find the regulation game, and so cleaning that up and bringing a more comprehensive review for planning commission and council later this year will, will help with that. So, this is separate, this is, this is minor changes. Hopefully, you'll see them that way, and really providing clarity to our customers as well as our reviewers.
Well, that's helpful. Thank you. And just one small comment, just on part five. It's not so much of a question, but just a comment for the record, but I know this is really limited just to decks, as I see it here, but I just have to say that I do have a lot of concern with the overall abandonment of the property setbacks in residential neighborhoods. It's just, it's selfish of me to raise it only because of a major development going up next door to my own home, and I, I just find the abandonment of those four-foot setbacks on the property lines a bit concerning at a lot of levels, primarily just because I do think it does generate a potential, a lot of potential, just conflict for the city and for, for neighborhoods. But, I do see this one, I mean, essentially, we're saying you can take decks right up to the property line, and I, I mean, I think that's obviously in line with kind of the other abandonment of setbacks, but I guess, you know, just for the record, I wouldn't mind just saying, I think the review of setbacks on residential properties is an important one as it relates to the broader zoning bylaw review, so I'll just leave it at that.
I do just want to clarify through you, Mr. Chair, that number five is speaking about setbacks adjacent to parks and streets and not adjacent to other built properties.
My apologies for the confusion, so I, the broader point still stands through my error, but that's a helpful clarification, so up to, so no restrictions on bringing it up to a park line, for sure. Yeah, I get it.
Further questions? Mr. Adams?
No, that's good.
Good? Anybody else? Questions? Well, I don't know what the record is, but this is going to be one short meeting. Mr. Gassier, since you're the mover, would you like to close debate? Okay.
Did I just say it? I closed, I moved to close debate.
Well done.